Our food hall competition is not quite a tournament. It's basically where, and it's still supposed to say you have your own, basically something. For us, sometimes it's either automotive, architecture, for me, it's exempt speaking. And then you actually go there and it's.
I have a spreadsheet of all of the.
Sorry. The event, you go there, so like architecture, design, things like sort of simulating just how a tournament would look, because you all go there and then you all fracture off to different places. There's only like two per year because it's such a complicated thing to coordinate.
I'm sure you spend a lot of time practicing.
Depends. For me, exempt speaking, I have a forensic, I demonstrate this, but they don't need to practice.
So because you got practice.
If you are just like a naturally like a good welder, you take class for welding, your dad taught you to weld when you were how old, then you don't really have to practice. If it's a new thing for you or if it's something you have to build by the thing, then that's really what changes.
And then like each thing, each category has like judges?
Yeah. Usually people who are actually experienced in that field, for example, Mr. Willm is the architecture teacher. He's doing architecture.
All right.
Yeah. It's a great part, it's a great organization.
Yeah.
Oh, I should have put Congress on.
What's for what?
Congress. It's, I'm very excited. I'm taking the team capital one of this year. Start getting people. Do you know anybody who's on L U N or mock trial? Because that's kind of the crowd I'm going for. It's a club that really nobody works about. I think it's just part of forensics. It really shouldn't be part of forensics.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the West Bend School Board, the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the education, at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, W I B D, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Superintendent Wimmer, could you please confirm that this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, a thanks, everyone. It is Tuesday, December 5th. We normally hold our meetings on Monday, but to accommodate schedules, we're meeting on Tuesday, so thank you for that. We recognize a quorum of our board. There are four members present. Kurt Rebholz is absent and excused, but we have two board members, Chad Temez and Kelly Lang, who are joining us virtually. And so just to confirm, Kelly, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Great. And Chad?
Yes, I am here.
Fantastic. So since we have a number of our board members attending virtually, our motions will, and votes will be recorded by roll call. So I'm going to ask in advance for my fellow board members to remind me that when I promptly forget it, but here we go. So next is approval of our agenda. So on our agenda, it was presented in advance. I would ask, well, actually, I'll make the motion. I would make a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second? All right. We'll give that one to John. Thank you, John. Motion, second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Swigard votes yes. Ms. Lang?
Yeah.
Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz is absent. Ms. Aragon?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. That motion carries. We have an approved agenda. We'll proceed then with our student representative reports, and we have our student reporters here tonight. We have Noah Minty, junior from West, and we have Archie Hughes, senior from West. Gentlemen, which one would like to go first? All right. Mr. Minty?
I don't have a ton for you today. I will be representing both student life and academics, all two items of that, and I will also be doing clubs and co-curriculars for you today. So let's get started. Starting off with student life and academics. We can see the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra right here in the West Bend schools. Tickets are currently available for the West Bend Columns Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops Concert, big name, on Tuesday, December 5th at 7:30 PM. And you can get that at the West Bend High School's Silver Lining Arts Center. And then a huge part of student life, winter break is on the way. Very important to a lot of students. Everybody's getting very excited for that. And then not too far off, our semester finals as well. That's all I have for student life and academics. And then we also don't have a ton for clubs and co-curriculars. The West Bend High School's StuCo Blood Drive is on Thursday, December 14. We talked about that a little bit last time. Timing is 6:30 AM to 12:30 PM. It's fast approaching, and the blood drive is open to community members, too, just a reminder of that, so anybody in the community can come. Now, moving on, I was asked to mention congratulations to the West Bend Model United Nations Team on their outstanding performance at the 2023 Madison Model United Nations Conference this past Saturday, yep, Saturday in Middleton. Senior Danny Zalp won Best Delegate for his portrayal of a top Soviet operative in the 1962 Crisis Committee. And then sophomore Elise Straff won Honorable Mention for her portrayal of the University of Miami and the U.S. Colleges Simulation. One more here, sophomore Audrey Brown won Out of World Mention, representing Spain in the Human Rights Council. And the team is advised by West Social Studies teacher, Mark Drake, and they are currently preparing for their spring conference. And then lastly here today, Skills USA is hosting a district tournament on Tuesday, December 12. We'll have all of District Five here for us. That's all I have for you today, so thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. And Mr. Hughes?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. In contrast to that, we have been very busy in athletics the last couple of weeks. First off, Kylie Altenendorf of the West volleyball team was Honorable Mention on the Wisconsin Volleyball Coaches Association All-State Division One Team. As the Wisconsin Soccer Coaches Association named West Senior Franklin Confero and West Junior Teddy Danaher to the All-State Team. West Junior Carson Bauer was honored last week, Thursday, for breaking Billy Albrecht's scoring record from over 40 years ago. Albrecht had scored 42 points in a single game, and Carson scored 43 last season. The girls' combined hockey team, the Lakeshore Lightning, won in a close 4-3 game and won again 3-0 against the Blackhawks last week. The West Boys varsity basketball team beat Mayville 60 to 57 with Jack Walla hitting a buzzer beater three-point shot. JV2 also beat Mayville by four. The boys' swim and dive team beat Whitefish Bay 98 to 84 with first, second, and third place going to West Bend Divers. This past weekend, Cole and Connor Marisola took first place at one of the biggest wrestling tournaments in the country, the Dan Gable-Donnybrook in Iowa, and Ethan Bass took third. Connor was voted the most outstanding wrestler of the tournament. West Gymnastics won the eight-team invite they hosted. Boys' Swim and Dive beat Whitefish Bay, who was picked to win the conference going into the season. Hockey beat Kettle-Murrene Co-op 4 to 3 in overtime, and West Dance in the Ashwabanon Competition took fourth out of 18 for Pom, fifth out of 16 for Hip Hop, and Caitlin McFarland took seventh out of 98 Silvolist. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we appreciate you keeping us connected to what's going on in our school system. Thank you for coming. All right. Next on our agenda is public participation. I don't have any public participation common cards. Just scanning to make sure there aren't any. I don't see any. So we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. And we have a number of items on our consent agenda. I'm just getting all of them ready here. We have minutes of the November 27, 2023 regular board meeting. There are no contracts or resignations to approve. There are two benefits advisory group and disbursements posted to November 30, 2023. Any questions on any items on the consent agenda? We then move to reports, and we start with superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer?
Yes. The pupil nondiscrimination report is something that we file every five years with the Department of Public Instruction. So they've realigned those schedules, so everyone will be submitting in spring of this year. So I just wanted to highlight what that is and how we're engaging in that work. So Wisconsin State statute requires that school boards evaluate the status of nondiscrimination and equality of educational opportunities in the district once every five years and report into DPI. So we'll be analyzing eight areas, which are our classes and programs, instructional, counseling, assessment and testing methods and materials, disciplinary actions, including suspensions, expulsions, and harassment, athletic, extracurricular, and recreational activities, scholarships and recognition, policies and practices, as well as technology. So we'll be working to analyze data associated with those eight domains, and we would invite anyone who'd like to participate in that process to reach out to my office and let me know if you would like to do that. And again, we intend to bring a finalized report back to the board this spring. So we'll keep you in the loop with ongoing progress monitoring of that report. This morning, we had the WBSD Way Breakfast, so we welcomed our West Bend School District Way Community Partners for a breakfast made by our high school culinary students. So thank you to everyone for their support of that program. So the businesses help promote being safe, ready, respectful, responsible in our community. They recognize our students when they're out in the community. Students are given a coupon or a ticket, and they come back in and can win different prizes or recognition in all of our schools. So again, thank you to all of those valuable community partners for their support and recognition for our students. The deadline for enrolling in the West Bend Virtual Academy is fast approaching for second semester. It's January 12. So it's open to any student in kindergarten through grade 12. Anyone who's new to the virtual platform, we do like a two-week, 14-day trial period to determine if that's a good fit, that's a good mode for learning. But anyone interested in applying must meet with the school counselor. If you're a high schooler, just make sure those credits, you've got everything covered in your transcript. So if you're interested in the Virtual Academy, reach out. Information's on our website, but be aware of that deadline. One of our clubs, the multicultural club, is holding a rummage sale, student-related items, including clothing, homecoming, prom dresses, et cetera. It will be December 10, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. You can enter by the fieldhouse to attend that. So all proceeds will benefit several clubs at our schools, and there will also be an appearance by Santa. So you might want to mark your calendar for Sunday, December 10. I foreshadowed this last time, just a reminder that our Student Services Department has put together a slate of mental health seminars. That first one's fast approaching on December 13 here at the Education Service Center at 5:00 PM, and it's understanding the impact of mental health on families. So it features a family sharing their struggles, lessons learned as they navigated having a son who's living with a mental health challenge. So thank you to that team for putting those on. Make sure that you're registering on our website, checking out that slate of other chats that are upcoming. So there'll be one each month. So thank you to them for, again, putting that together, and thank you to the family and the panel of community, not only experts, but resources who'll be part of the presentations, too. We have a West Bend District Night at the Wisconsin Herd Game. And if you don't know what that is, that is the Milwaukee Bucks G League team. That was new to me. I wasn't sure what that is. But they are calling it West Bend Schools Night, Saturday, January 16, for the 7:00 PM game, because our very own West Bend High School's band will be there performing. All West Bend students are invited to participate in a High Five Tunnel with all the Herd players. Information on how to purchase tickets is on our website, so check that out. I know the students talked about the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra, who's performing this evening. You can get tickets at the door if you want, but that is part of benefiting Columns. That's an organization, through its generous donations, provides over $900,000 in scholarships, in local scholarships to our students. So we're appreciative of their support. They just held their scholarship night the other night for high school seniors and their families. So if you weren't able to make that night, check in with your counselor, College and Career Center. And again, just appreciative of Columns as a community organization and their support for our students who are pursuing, whether it's two-year, four-year colleges, technical schools, other universities, and opportunities. Grateful for their support. Students have until February 15 to apply for those scholarships. So again, check in at the high school if you missed the meeting. Go to the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra tonight to support that organization, and thank you to Columns for their partnership. That's all I had to report.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer on her report? Thanks again. All right. We'll move on then to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is audited financials for 2022, 2023, effective June 30, 2023, and fund balance designation. And I believe Mr. Andy Sarno, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, is going to kick this off. And we have a special guest tonight, correct?
We do. I've missed you guys. It's been, it's been, it's been a short period since I've been at the podium. This evening, we have Brian Grunewald joining us from Clifton Larson Allen. He's considered the principal, main individual on our account as well. I'd like to just briefly introduce Julie Mark. She's the district's controller. She handles a lot with the audit. Julie is one of those awesome people that you just love to have on your team, so thank you to Julie. And it's not just Julie. Additionally, there's other departments, other groups. As we take a look, even when you break it down to the school level, we have a lot of people doing good work. In what Mr. Grunewald's going to be reporting today, we have one finding, and that is that we did not prepare our audited financial statements, which coincidentally, I was at Green Bay on this last Friday for a workshop, and even the Green Bay Public Schools, that 22,000 students, has that same finding. It's just that we don't have that level of expertise, and it's not worth the investment to do that. But we have a lot of positive things to share as a part of our audit. So thanks to Julie, our financial team, the members of our group, the food service group, Emily's crew with the grants that we include. I'm going to hand it over to Brian, going to go through a presentation. Please engage in dialogue. This is for discussion tonight. We'd be bringing this forward for action, formal action, on January 8, both the audit, acceptance of the audit. And then after Brian presents and we have some questions, if we do, I have just a brief presentation with our fund balance designations. That's something that we always do here with the different classifications. So thanks for joining us tonight, Brian.
All right. Well, I'm Brian Grunewald. Thank you for having me here this evening. And before I get started, I want to echo Andy's comments with regards to Julie and your team. As part of the audit process, we do ask for a lot of financial information, ask a lot of questions. That process probably drags out a little bit longer than what Julie would like, but certainly want to thank you and your team for the cooperation assistance that we receive throughout the audit process. And as Andy said, in terms of the presentation here this evening, there are multiple audit documents, the audited financial statements, as well as what I'm going to refer to as a governance letter. For purposes of tonight's discussion, I've taken some of the key highlights from both those documents and put them in a real brief PowerPoint. Again, as we're going through this, if anyone has any questions on either of those documents, or if you want to talk more about the audit process and what we're doing and why, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Okay. That being said, I'm just going to jump into the PowerPoint. This first slide here, just as a reminder, with regards to responsibilities relative to the audit process, you can see that the bullet points are relative to management's responsibilities, as well as our responsibilities as auditors. A reminder that management is technically responsible for the preparation of those financial statements. And in addition to that, the district is also responsible for their internal control environment. Consider that, how you handle transactions from accounting process, how you pay your bills, how you handle cash, how you pay your payroll. You're all responsible for that design and implementation of that system and those procedures. Our responsibilities as part of the audit is to, one, issue an opinion on the financial statements. We've done that, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. In order for us to do that, we do consider your internal control structure. We'd like to understand how things are done so we can properly plan and perform the audit. I do want to emphasize that. We do consider, we don't issue an opinion on your internal control structure. We perform tests and procedures, ask for a lot of information from Julie to work through the numbers and the financial statements, and make sure that we agree with things like accounting policies and accounting practices. Once we've done that, we can, it allows us to issue that opinion. And if we move on to this slide, it really walks you through the summary of those audit results. And just as a reminder, there's three different reports listed here, because there's actually three different reports included within your financial statements. The first or the main one is the auditor's report on the basic financial statements. That's on pages one through three in the financial statements. That is considered to be an unmodified opinion. I would consider that to be clean or positive. And as a reminder, that's really the highest level of assurance that you can receive as part of the audit process. Really means that I believe that your financial statements are complete and accurate and in accordance with our professional standards, meaning it's, they include all relative information that we're required to include. The middle comment there, the auditor's report on internal control. Again, as part of that audit process, we do consider the organization's internal control structure. We don't issue an opinion on that, but we do issue a report. As part of that, you can see there is a reference to that finding that Andy mentioned. It's listed in your financial statements as finding 2023-1, Preparation of the Annual Financial Statements. And just to reiterate what Andy mentioned, as part of the audit process, again, the district is responsible for those financial statements. We, as your auditors, provide a service, that being to prepare that document on your behalf. I'll see if I back up to an accounting 101 type scenario. Ideally, the organization would prepare those financial statements, and we would come in and do a complete independent audit of that. In practicality, as Andy mentioned, all the districts that I work with, we actually prepare those financial statements. So it's very common for us to do that and provide that service. When that situation occurs, we're just required to communicate that, which is why we have the reference to the finding, and just to provide some assurance to the board as part of that process. And what we do is we're constantly working with Julie throughout the process to make sure that our numbers agree. There's actually DPI reporting where we both certify to the Department of Public Instruction that our numbers and our fund balance agrees, and we do share a draft of your financial statements, you know, before we issue that final document. Those are all steps that we do to make sure that we're on the same page with regards to the financial statements. So I really view that finding as more of a disclosure about our role in the audit process. Very common in today's environment.
Can you just pause there for a second? Because I was asked about this every year, and I agree, and you explained it very nicely. Do you believe that with your firm preparing the financial statements, that there's any impairment of your independence in any way? I would think not, but I'd like your opinion on that.
No, and I'll say that that's the reason why we take that structured approach with regards to the review of the draft and the verification of the numbers and making sure that we're on the same page. And I really view it's more of a matter of efficiency. We have time. We have a lot of templates that we go through and helps us create this document efficiently. So if you think of doing that internally, obviously would be a hindrance on the workload and ability to get that done, too. So very common in today's environment. Again, all, all school districts that I work with, we do prepare those financial statements. If I step back, I only have a few clients, which actually are county governments, very large county governments with larger staffs where they take that on and do that themselves internally. So very common. And then the last item there, there's also a report on compliance, and I'll talk more about that in a second here. With regards to compliance, that is focused more on federal and state aid. And again, just want to reiterate, we do issue an opinion on that. It's considered to be an unmodified opinion with regards to compliance. Okay. Then this next slide really intended to give you an overview of what's included in that governance communication letter. That, that letter is addressed to the board. It includes a lot of very standardized accounting topics. If you would compare the language in there from this year to last year, again, very comparable because of the standardized language in there. The, the slide presents a summary of what those topics are. From my perspective, nothing that I consider to be unusual, certainly nothing that's a red flag. When I step back and think of the different topics that are presented here, again, talks about things like accounting practices and accounting estimates. So there is some disclosure of some of the key estimates that are included within your financial statements. Financial statement disclosures, again, I would say nothing unusual. We are presenting what we are required to include within your financial statements in the footnotes. And then the one that catches my attention there, too, in the middle labeled as the audit adjustments. I talked earlier about the process that we go through to make sure that we're on the same page. Happy to report, no issues, no concerns, no uncorrected misstatements, no concern with regards to audit adjustments. Your financial statements are complete and accurate from my perspective. Any thoughts, questions, concerns, any topics on that list that catch your attention that you'd like me to talk further about? All right. Okay. And then I talked, I did mention compliance briefly. This slide, it's labeled as single audit. It is really geared towards the process of incorporating the audit of your federal and state aid and incorporating that into this year-end process. I just wanted to first give you some assurance and talk about what we do and how we do it. From a compliance standpoint, your financial statements include 8.6 million of federal funds, approximately 40 million in state funding. And from a testing standpoint, we are not required to test every program on an annual basis. We go through, I'll say, a risk assessment process and a rotation process in terms of the different programs that we dig into and test annually. I listed the programs that we tested from a federal and state perspective for this year's audit. Do want to mention that ESAR is included on there, just because of the, I'll say, the newness of that program. And again, as part of that process, we're performing tests. We're not looking at every transaction related to those programs. And to give you some perspective on the dollars that we're testing, I did add that sentence at the bottom. From a federal perspective, we're testing 4.4 million out of 8.6, or approximately 50% of your federal funding. And on the state side, testing approximately 35.6 million, or 89% of the state funding that you received. And the point with this all is just, again, to remind you that we do perform tests of your federal and state aid. And from, from a disclosure standpoint, no issues, no concerns, no instances of non-compliance, no exceptions found with regards to our audit testing.
And were the programs that you tested, were those selected by your firm, or were they selected by, who selected them?
Yeah. We go through a process. We determine which programs we want to test on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Okay. Then these next few slides, I just wanted to jump into some of the key financial information. So when I step back and think about financial performance or some of the key things that I like to look at from a financial condition perspective, fund balance is the number one most common metric, metric in terms of things that we like to focus on financially. I've also got a slide with regards to debt, and then also another one that focuses on long-term obligations, specifically the pension and OPEB benefits. So first, this slide, just stepping back and focusing on your general fund. I like this slide because it gives you some perspective on what's been happening from a trend perspective. And from an accounting standpoint, we look at things like, well, what's the volatility? How much fluctuation has there been? What kind of trends do we see? As you can see here, the last three years, your fund balance has been extremely consistent overall. And then we'll talk a little bit about those categories that you have there, too. So dating back to 2019, total fund balance, approximately 15.2 million. That's the sum of all those categories. If you roll that forward to 2021, that did increase to approximately 17.8. And then you ended 2021, at 23, at 18.1 million. For the year ended June 30, 2023, your fund balance reserves did increase $187,000. What that means is the sum of all of your revenue sources for your general fund exceeded the sum of all of your expenses in your expense categories for the year, resulting in an increase in that fund balance. If we get into the different categories there, those are defined by our, by our professional standards. The committed category, I always refer to that as the opportunity for the district to plan. So where you decide to commit funds, you've identified a purpose, you identify amounts, and you can set those aside for planning purposes. So there is more information of what's disclosed or included in that amount on page 52. The restricted category is really amounts that depending, are based on the revenue source, who gave you that money, you have to follow the rules of what they gave you that money for. So the dollars that are left at the end of 2023 is really grant-related dollars, where you have to follow the terms of the grant and the grant compliance in order to properly spend those monies. And then the unassigned category, really what's left, do want to reiterate that from a financial condition perspective, it is really important to maintain and monitor how much unassigned fund balance you do have. That really comes into primarily due to the timing, timing of when you receive significant revenue sources. Think of when you receive your property taxes, for example. Think of when you receive certain key state aid payments. The timing of that requires that you have reserves and cash on hand to be able to pay your bills throughout the year. So you can see that unassigned balance. You can see how that has fluctuated back in 2019, had approximately 7, 7.2 million. You can see how that's increased. I do want to point out that from 2022 to 2023, you did increase slightly from 12,530,000 to 12,80,000. So overall, what I see on this slide is a lot of positives. I mean, the fact that you don't have a lot of fluctuation, the balances that you've had, the, the ability to grow your unassigned fund balance, I certainly think that those are all very positive. I will talk about how much you have from a benchmarking perspective when we move on to this next slide. From a benchmarking perspective, we always like to look at the amount of fund balance dollars that you have, both in your total fund balance as well as your unassigned category. And to compare that to the amount of actual expenditures that you have, to give us a percentage so we can compare from one district to another. If you look at the two lines that we have here, first being the blue line, again, that's focusing on just that unassigned fund balance in comparison to the actual expenditures that you've had. And you can see how that line has fluctuated over time, consistent with what we saw on the previous slide. You can see increases from 2019 to 2021, 2022, and then 2022 and 2023 being very consistent between years. If I go back to the previous slide. I mean, you can see that your fund balance dollars actually went up slightly in 2023. But when you come here, you can see that percentage coming down a little bit. That's really because of the increase in your actual expenditures, bringing the percentage down. So just wanted to highlight that. And then again, you can see the, the total line. Again, that's, that's the sum of all of your fund balance categories in comparison to all of your expenditures for your general fund. And you can see the history there, ending 2023 at 21.6%. Any thoughts, questions with regards to general fund, general fund balance? I know I went through those pretty quickly. And then we also just wanted to give you a snapshot of some of your other funds and the balances that you've had there. And again, have a comparison to prior years. When you look at the, the different categories or different funds that are included on here, important to remember that each of those funds has a specific purpose. From an accounting standpoint, the revenues and the expenditures and the activity related to that fund, any fund balance reserves are restricted for that purpose as well. So when we look at the debt service funds, for example, yes, there's 8.9 million in terms of your ending fund balance reserves. Those fund balance reserves are restricted for future principal and interest payments. Similarly, if you move down the slide, you'll see the references to the food service program, community service program. Again, those dollars set aside are restricted for that specific program. And then lastly, at the slide, you'll see the references to your capital project funds. Just want to point out or emphasize that that is the total of all of your capital projects funds. So for example, your Fund 46, Long-Term Capital Improvement Fund, is included in that balance. But again, you do have 4.9 million there at the end of the year. When I step back and think of the highlights, or one of the things that I just wanted to emphasize, certainly the food service program has gone through a lot when you think of COVID, moving into a COVID environment, free and reduced meals with regards to COVID. The increase in fund balance that you experienced from '21 to '22, very common in that COVID environment because of the free meals and federal funding available, a lot of districts did increase. So you do have a strong balance in your food service program. Any other thoughts, comments, questions as you look at that? Anything stick out? Okay, then I just wanted to step back and take a look again at your general obligation, long-term debt. There is a lot of debt information included in your financial statements on footnotes, pages 35 through 37. This slide, I just wanted to give you a snapshot of your overall balances, and again, the trend of what you see there. So this just shows you that, that trend over the last few years. If I just step back to 2022, at the end of 2022, you had approximately 12.1 million of general obligation debt outstanding. During the year, you did repay 3.7 million in principal, leaving you with approximately 8.3 million. You can see that on the slide here when you look at the overall totals. And again, from a, from a debt perspective, we're always looking at and reporting as of June 30th, that fiscal year end. As of June 30th, 2023, we look at the terms, the repayment requirements of the debt that's outstanding and in place. Based on the agreements in place at the end of the fiscal year, you are scheduled to repay approximately 3.9 million of principal in the '23, '24 budget in fiscal year. Certainly understand that that's built into your budget and your budget process. But just wanted to give you a snapshot of your overall general obligation debt. And then I also just wanted to talk briefly on some of those other long-term liabilities that are included within your financial statements. This is focusing specifically on your other post-employment benefits, commonly referred to as OPEB, and then also your pension benefits. Just a reminder that from an audit standpoint, we are required to rely on an actuary to value those benefits. So we've done that. You'll see the reference on the top portion of the slide here. Based on the most recent actuarial studies that you've had, they're projecting OPEB liabilities and pension liabilities of what you can see on the slide there, 5.6 and 7.6 million. And as a reminder, from a budget and funding perspective, the district has established a Fund 73, that, that other post-employment benefit trust. And as of the end of June 30th, 2023, you did have net positional reserves built up of 5.2 million at the end of 2023. And the message with that is certainly appreciate the district's level of effort in terms of what they've gone through from a, I'll say, planning perspective on that, understanding employee benefits, what kind of commitments you've made, relying and working with actuaries to value those benefits, and then also stepping back and being conscious of the Fund 73 and the benefit of that, using that for a funding mechanism. And then just another brief comment here, in terms of the audit and the audit process, looking forward. For those that have been on the board, I think every year that I've been here for the last several years, I've talked about new standards and new regulations, new requirements, things that we have to deal with as part of the audit process. I'll say June 30th, 2024 is no different. There are some new standards, statements on auditing standards, number 143 to 145. We will be working closely with your team, making sure that we share information with regards to those standards, what they have to do, what we have to do to make sure that those are properly implemented. So just trying to be proactive with that, and that is all that I had prepared in terms of comments.
Thank you very much. A pause to see if we have any questions from our board members. This is a discussion item, so we'll be bringing it back for action, so we'll have a second opportunity. Any questions in the meantime? Now, I certainly asked mine. Is there anything in the, your last slide talked about the, you know, new statements, new regulations. And you don't need to go into detail, but are, are there any at first blush, in your opinion, that should be concerning to us?
I will say no to that in this standard. Some of the previous standards that we talked about in prior years had, I'll say, more of a financial impact and more of an impact potentially on footnotes and footnote disclosures. These standards, I'll say, really are more geared towards documentation, documentation of our understanding of, of key controls. There's a heavy emphasis on IT or IT environment. So we'll be working and talking more with, we'll have our IT people talk to your IT people and dig into that part of it a little bit more. But nothing from a financial statement presentation standpoint, certainly nothing from a budget standpoint that's going to cause any changes or concerns there.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you. Last opportunity, any other questions? All right, we'll see this as an action item then on our upcoming agenda. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Oh, all right. Let me return to our agenda here.
I am appreciative of Brian and his team as well. We've worked with them for a number of years now. And they've done a very thorough process in regards to being able to address, be proactive. So even with those GASB statements and moving forward, we've been really proactive with being able to identify steps and processes ahead of time to be able to engage in that timely. In fact, I think we were one of the model districts with GASB nine, no, GASB 84 with Fund 21. Yeah, so I think we're at least a year, if not two years, ahead of some other districts and we're a resource at, at different points where people are calling us, asking what we're doing. So again, with Julie and the work that she's done and Brian, his team, I'm, I'm very happy with, with this audit. Doesn't mean that there's not things that we can continue to improve upon, which we will do. But thank you though, appreciate it. Briefly, and Brian touched on it, Tim, I have to admit. I'm sorry. That's the proposed calendar. I, I have a document where I was just going to be sharing, thank you, I'm sorry, sir. I'm going to be sharing just a little bit of the information about further, further classifications of those different fund balances. So we have our general fund, different classifications as well. And it's a little bit more simple when we get into the other funds, our debt services, our capital projects. Thank you. Wanted to be able to share that. This is information that's currently in our books as it stands, as of right now. We did see a couple little variances, the way that Brian and his team had a book, a prepaid, I think it was either prepaid or deferred expenditure, but with our Fund 29 head start. But this is the way that it is in our books at this point in time. Again, discussion only at this point in time, action to take, take action on, on January 8th. But just going through this, again, non-spendable prepaid's and inventory. We have the beginning fund balance, the ending fund balance for this period in time as of January, or as of June 30th, 2023, which then rolls as our starting fund balance for '24, '23, '24. Again, information that was logged as a part of the audit, we have to book certain things in a certain way. Restricted health and dental, self-insured, we have reserves set aside in case claims exceed the premiums collected. Slight adjustment to that due to the increases in expenditures and inflationary measures of health insurance. Get kids ahead, this is where we had restricted dollars for grants in these next two areas, both with a specific grant, as well as some monies that are set aside for our libraries. These are dollars that we will be spending in the current year or even in future years. So in the meantime, since those were already dollars received, we need to book any unspent dollars in these restricted areas. We have a health reimbursement account, an HRA. These are dollars, again, set aside. We can't strictly expense those dollars. We pay the bill when they come due. So we have reserves set aside, restricted for those, those reserved for future claims. That will be addressed here in the current year, is that sun setting at the end of the calendar year so that when we take a look at the June 30th of 2024, will be different. We will find a different home for those dollars. We still have about a million and a half dollars committed towards the Jackson Fund. That's if and when something happens with a building in that area. Previous boards have asked for monies to be set aside. We did purchase about $750,000 of land with this. It was two and a half million. It's dropped down to the 1.5 that's currently there. But those are available yet for a future project. We have a turf fund that was set aside that, again, available dollars at a fiscal year end without going into the red, into the negative, but $125 have been reserved. We are getting to the point where we're going to be needing money for turf replacement above and beyond track and potentially stadium, but that money could be used when that project were to take place. As Brian indicated, the unassigned general fund balance, it represents, we have a fund balance policy, 662.3. Gives a reserve, a range of this account between 14 and 18%. We're at 14.5, but that is a little bit at the low end. And again, the only way that you add to fund balance is at fiscal year end, when we take that snapshot, you have excess dollars, meaning revenues exceed the expenditures with a remaining balance that rolls into fund balance. So unless we purposefully underspent in a year to build this up further, that would be the way to do it. But we are within our range per board policy, just above that 14 point, 14% floor. The dollars that we have in our other funds, and again, I'll be quick on this. Student activity, these are fundraised dollars that are sitting in what we call our Fund 21. It's all student-led activity. It does fluctuate based on saving money for foreign field trips, making sure that they have money for bigger projects and other things. But this is all student dollars. It increased just a little bit over this last year. We have our non-referendum debt service that had been growing due to interest that had been incurring within this fund. And those dollars are actually being used this year, that we're going to take that down to zero at year end for the last million-dollar payment, and our non-referendum payments are complete after the current year. You'll notice that Mr. Grunwald referenced our other debt, which is our referendum debt in the reserves that are in this fund, and we did build that up just a little bit last year because we levied additional dollars. We're done levying. We still have payments for another couple of years. And these reserves, the $7.9 million that's sitting there, will be used for those future years' payments. They're in an interest-bearing account at this point in time, earning money. But when those payments are done, any available balance would be transferred into the general fund. Or unless there was other new debt, it could continue to be used within, within, within our debt, debt area. Capital projects, this is our Fund 41 that we've talked about. We transfer money at the annual meeting every year. That's one of the resolutions. We have our Fund 46, which is one that when there's been excess dollars at fiscal year end, we've been able to transfer for future projects, as well as the Barton money sitting in Fund 49, $540,000. So at some point in time, and we have slowly been using that, addressing our facility's needs, those dollars are available for that in a strategic way. Food service, as Mr. Grunwald indicated as well, that balance had grown. We used just a little bit last year for the investment towards staff. Food costs are increasing and even some capital expenses with some equipment, equipment replacement. We do need to come up with a spend plan because that does exceed the required amount. So we're working with Tom Dembski and his team to understand what that looks like in a timeline to make sure that we're investing in the program and providing nutritious meals to our students. We have our other post-employment benefit trust. Again, those are dollars set aside for that future liability that was identified, a little over $13 million as a part of that actuarial study. So we're strategically using that. But that fund was set up to build a positive balance, and that's what we've done, slowly using that as we incur those expenditures. The last area, which is our Fund 80, where our community services fund. We did have a sizable fund balance a few years ago. We'd been spending that down. We levied those additional dollars this last year that were unspent. So that did get built up again, and we will be spending that down over the next couple of years again, providing just a little bit of relief towards the expenditures because that is all levy dollars, except areas that we collect the money for our student, students participating in sports and our pool activities and things like that. This was a lot of information presented to you tonight, both the audit, except formally accepting the audit as well as the classifications of fund balances. If you have any questions between now and January 8th, you can let this digest. If you have any further questions, please reach out. And if I don't know the answer, which is possible, I'll make sure that I work with Julie and Brian and his team and make sure that we get the best answer possible. But again, very happy with the, the document that's being presented to you this evening and appreciate all the work that went into doing that. Any other questions specific to the fund balance or the audit in general?
Just procedurally, so with regard to this document that we're looking at, you're asking the board to approve essentially the ending balance of these? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep. So ending balance, which is our beginning balance, this is already in our books as it stands. There have been years where if, if you guys said we need to get more money in that turf account, now would be the time where I would either increase it, decrease it. We could do that. It's not what's in our books, but we would make sure that that happens. It's not recorded in our audited financials that way, but we have the ability to make adjustments to reflect any changes.
Sure. Thank you. Just want to clarify the, clarify the ask. With that, are there any other questions for Andy? Go ahead, John.
This document is uploaded into Board Docs, so there's four documents within our audit agenda item this evening.
It should be the first discussion item. Yeah, it's the discussion item A, yeah, the audited financials item, and then I think it's the third attachment.
Yep, correct.
There it is. Yeah.
So don't be shy if you have any questions either on the audit or the fund balance designations.
Any other questions? Think of a presentation, we'll, we'll see this topic again next time. But I think you are on for the next agenda item, if I remember. District budget calendar for 2024, 2025.
Yeah, this, this is something that we started several years, and so when you take a look at when we originally started it, we're now... we're now, and I think I might have even formatted it to keep it at three pages. But it's, it evolves. In fact, we did add a couple of new items last year, a couple of new items this year. The purpose behind this is for transparency, so people can, both external as well as internal, people completing the work, stay on task, that we have an idea of what work needs to get done in the timeline and who is performing that work. Some of these are statutory, some of these are required through our own expectations. We include everything from the business services, you'll see a lot of human resources. We've incorporated technology, facilities, and student services through some of the different financial, as well as just strategic type, strategic type actions and work tasks that are assigned to us. So I am not saying that by next week, we wouldn't even add to this, which we might. But this is for discussion and just really awareness of the work that we do. Because what we presented this evening, I'm now presenting for that 2024, 25, and I will be in front of you probably in December of '25 with Brian and Julie and presenting this. So this is that two-year window from the planning purpose, the 12 fiscal months, and another four to six months of that audit wrap-up. It's a 24-month period, so we are just bringing that forward and keeping it on our radar to be able to understand the work. I even just, because it is important, ooh, that's a funky font. Just as an example, I've got the gray line, and even as a part of understanding, I even have on here an election day for the governor, it's even an available referendum day. So next Monday, we will be talking with Epstein UN Architects, Epstein UN Architects, Findorf. Our teams having a workshop surrounding the facility study that we're undergoing. Will that result in anything? I just wanted to keep that election because that's there as a potential referendum date, where we could have a question on the ballot. Even understanding that the legislature, we're now going to be coming into that next fiscal year, the next, the next biennial budget. We know what it is for 2024, 25, but keep in mind, it's '25, '27 that's on the horizon. Our federal lesser dollars are gone, we need to plan as strategically as possible to make sure that we're not adversely affecting the district's ability to deliver instruction to our students. So that, that's, that's really it in a nutshell. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody was wondering anything specific about the dates, even reconnecting with you guys periodically throughout the process.
Oh, I know you've, you've prepared a similar document in years past, and I think this is great, and it lays out all the plans, very transparent, and obviously there are a lot of activities that happen. What I also appreciate is, and I know I said this at other meetings before, in the private sector, our budgeting cycle wouldn't look anything like this. So it's great to see that, nope, when we see things that may appear to be a bit off-cycle, this is actually how it works in the, in the education world, and so in the world of public, public education, so thank you for that. I don't have any questions at this time, are there questions from other board members? Go ahead, June.
I did notice that there are a couple lines that maybe don't have the full description. For example, March 21st, it looks like it's just the word "office" under the description. So is maybe there a line that maybe isn't shown that would help describe?
Yep, I apologize, with this formatting, there's word wrap in that, so it's a spreadsheet. I'll make sure that I upload an accurate, I was struggling with that a little bit because I went from Google Sheets over to Excel, and it may have skinnied that up a little bit. Thank, thank you for catching that.
Good catch, June. Other questions? So just procedurally, will we receive this for an update, or is this an inform item? Actually, I'm sorry, will the board need to take action on this, or is this an update item?
Thank you for asking. We have brought this forward for formal action, so that we presented on January 8th as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, appreciate your presentation, thank you, Andy.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Superintendent Wimmer, the next item is Wisconsin Association of School Boards, or WASB Delegate Assembly Proposed 2023 Resolutions, and I believe you're going to update us on that item.
Yes, it's an opportunity for the board to have discussion regarding those resolutions, so that our delegate, Ms. Kruger, can represent the district. So we have those resolutions attached in Board Docs, and I just wanted to walk through a couple. We've talked as certainly an executive team around what implications there would be from the district. So I'll walk through those and pause just for everyone to add to that discussion. So the first one is around student teachers, interns, it is looking to expand the pipeline. We, we know that those applicant pools are shrinking, and the state is looking to remove barriers, whether it's incentives such as paying for student teaching and things like that, because, you know, right now they're spending sometimes a year in classrooms, working at the cost of tuition and not, not being able to collect money. So they're looking at opportunities for that. For us, any efforts to support talent development, accessibility, and future workforce would be appreciated. So anything that lends itself to that flexibility would be something that we would support. Any other different opinions from the board? Didn't think so. On the, on the back end of that, then it's almost a partnership resolution, and when I don't, I, I don't know if he intended to put that up and drive it, everyone's got that in front of them, so you don't have to follow along that way, our audience community can, can scroll in the document alone. But the next one is a stipend for cooperating teachers. Because all of those pre-service teachers need to come into classrooms and work alongside veteran staff members. I always call that the longest interview of your life. But for our veteran staff members to take on a student teacher throughout kind of where they are in that licensure, it's a lot of work, they're helping to develop them in their career too. So hosting a pre-service teacher could lead to future employment in the district, any of those things. So it's great, and it would help to honor kind of that burden that veteran teachers are taking on to pass along their expertise. So we would absolutely be in support of that because again, helps grow our, our local access to candidates.
Are we going to, are we going to put a limit on how many teachers we would possibly be posting for that?
So we have agreements with certain colleges and things of that nature. What we do limit is to make sure that they're effective staff members in good standing. So right now, we haven't approached anywhere near a saturation point with people coming into our district.
All the veteran teachers that are doing this are onboard, and they're, they're, it's like a volunteer thing?
Correct, correct, yeah, we-
They've got the capacity to do it, they're not being overwhelmed by-
No, 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 this, this is something that we would let people know of the opportunity, and they would volunteer. Right now, they're volunteering for that, and it's unpaid. So this would support a payment for them signing on, much like we pay for a mentor stipend when they're onboarding new teachers into the system, this is kind of that pre-service pathway. So again, honoring their commitment and their work, but again, by no means, good question, that they are not obligated to do so, nor would this obligate them to do so. The next couple ones, there's various for students with disabilities. There's some special education, general language, that is updating language, it's taking out the word mainstreaming, it's an outdated term. Our system's already updated our language to reflect that, so there's no impact. We would support using updated language, the same around specialty schools with certain terms. So are there any questions about those?
None.
Okay, there's one around the Office of School Safety. Again, that funding was jeopardized in the last budget, but did prevail. There's certain pieces that we use, so beyond the accountability and compliance, there were some, early on when it was first developed, there were grant dollars associated with that. So they oversaw that and the accountability on the usage of those grant dollars. They also help with, you know, tonight, you, you did the safety reports, we're turning those in to the state from that accountability lens. But also, we're provided to lower no-cost training through the office, and then they also host the tip line and pay for that, so that's something that our district does use. So we would be supportive of allocating some funding to continue that and be able to access that, not only us, but also other schools. Any question on the Office of School Safety? The next was on artificial intelligence. So what we would like to see in this, the district would welcome networking and collaboration regarding legislation and practice. So they're talking about kind of bringing us into the fold. And then I know Tim had, and his team were talking about making sure that we're talking about other pieces, like infrastructure and cybersecurity and all of that. So sometimes when they bring us in, they're only interested in our opinions on the educational opinion and the tools for students. But we also would like to be part of the conversation on infrastructure, cybersecurity, in all of those, whether it's the next resolution or as AI develops in the field. So just wanting to be a part of that, so we would support that and kind of, like I said, kind of elbow our room at the table for an expansion, cybersecurity insurance, those kinds of things, attacks on public systems are something that you see increasing, so really collaborating would be beneficial. And that takes us, those, those next ones, that artificial intelligence, as well as that classroom technology piece. Any questions on those? So the next ones are around some revenue pieces and control of that. So they're cleaning up some older language, and then they're also trying to introduce some flexibility. So anytime that we can protect local control for the school board, as well as navigate some flexibility, that is beneficial to us. It's specifically beneficial in their calculation for membership. They're talking about widening some flexibility, I think it was over 65% of school districts face declining enrollment as birth rate declines, all of those things. So being able to lean on how you do from a three-year rolling average for enrollment to a five-year to a one-year, and how you can mitigate the impact on a district would be helpful to us. So it's just an important piece, but again, that's the fine balancing act, you know, the pot doesn't change of what the funds that they have to allocate. So, you know, how you do that can create winners and losers for districts. So just being mindful of that, something that protects local control, flexibility in making decisions that are of benefit is recommended by our team too. Any questions on that? Great. Yes, no?
I thought I heard, I thought I heard a question.
Maybe.
John?
Yep, the revenue limit ones.
Well, this is, I guess I'm not understanding what they're, they, they want to do with the state revenue limit?
No, what they want to do is they want to update their language, and I can share their original language because that's what Andy and I were combing over today, like, how is this even different from what they have? So they're updating some pieces, but what they're introducing is some flexibility. Instead of everyone has to lean on the three-year rolling average for enrollment, that maybe looking at some avenues for five-year or a one-year. So they're making a statement that they don't support revenue limits being imposed and all of that. That exists in the current language and resolution, so that wasn't the shift. The shift was more around, like I said, that local control and some options, so districts could find a pathway that would be of benefit financially. And if you want, between now and then, I can grab the original language, so you can compare that in the document.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, we're not overstepping, you know, with, with revenue, revenue limit and what we're taking from taxpayers with something like this, we're agreeing to use this or however this is going to be implemented, because, I mean, state controls revenue limit, I think, to protect the, the local, you know, the people from being taxed too much for taxes. I understand what you're saying, where they're opening up kind of just a little bit of a leeway as far as, you know, what they need year, year instead of a average, is that what you're saying?
Yep, so, and to your-
Not have that foresight in, you know, with that longer average, so lowering it down to a one or two-year-
Right. But to your point, we would want to instruct June, when it comes to this conversation, then we want to talk about that protection because there are models or choices that you can make that would impact one thing or another. Remember, we talked about some of the funding, the different sources that we talked about in the audit, and the, the pot doesn't change, they don't get to, you know, it's, it's how you slice the pie and what that impact is. So I'm hearing kind of local control, flexibility, but being conscious of taxpayers is how we would want to make sure and participate in the conversation, that we're bringing that up. June, any other questions from board members, so that you feel comfortable representing that? Perfect, thank you. And then lastly, looking at some pieces again around licensure and those pieces, we looked at that. Again, any efforts that support talent development and accessibility to strong candidate pools, future workforce would be supported on those. Any other questions? Great, I've got those notes, I saw June taking notes, so that she can represent the district in that conversation that's coming up, kind of the mid-January, where, where she would represent us and participate in that. And Chris is her backup should something occur, so they have the information that they need to represent our district, so thank you.
So this is a topic that really is advisory, we don't take action on this, we want to see this back, so to speak. This is advisory, because this is up to WASB and the WASB delegates ultimately, correct?
Correct, so June will go and represent us based on our conversation tonight and, and what the district brought to that conversation. So all the delegates get together, depending on how they, they vote, but they'll have a robust discussion around pieces, and then they'll take formal action as a delegate body. So we're advising our delegates on how to represent us in the conversation.
All right. Thank you. So that concludes our last discussion item. We move to our single action item tonight. Before we do that, I'm just going to do a little check to make sure that those attending virtually are still here. Chad, Kelly, are you still with us?
Yep, still here.
Okay, great, excellent, perfect, all right. So our action item tonight is considering the approval of out-of-state travel for high school band 2025. And Superintendent Wimmer, I know we talked before the meeting, and I asked if administration had any additional information or updated information on this?
No additional information, no questions in the interim.
Great. Board members, any questions on this, on this item, we heard about it at the last meeting? All right, thank you. Hearing none. I would move to approve the out-of-state travel for the high school band in 2025 as presented, is there a second? Melanie, thank you, we have a motion and second to approve the out-of-state travel as recommended, as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr. Temez? Mr. Rebholz is absent, Ms. Argot? Ms. Lang? Thank you, Ms. Swigert-Voltz, yes, Ms. Kruger? And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Great, thank you, that motion carries. We move then to future agenda items and our board meeting calendar. In fact, Superintendent Wimmer, maybe we can talk a little bit about December 11th and our school board work session, if you can just maybe speak a few sentences on that.
Sure, so that is the culmination of months of study of our facilities, so our partners in EUA and Findorf will be here. That will look a little bit different, that's why it's called a work session, and that's why we move kind of our regular agenda to here. So here, in this type of setting for a board meeting, we're governed by Robert's rules, all those pieces. Our work sessions are every bit as transparent, they're just kind of at that shared table space, and they're not bound by those rules. It's a more free-flowing conversation as they progress through presentation of that report. Board members are encouraged to reflect, ask questions, get clarity. Certainly, it's going to be a lot of information to take in, it won't be the only conversation that we have related to that item. So we'll, we'll have future opportunities too, but it, it's a different style of meeting, still publicly posted, still captured live, and still archived, so that people can access it. It's just a little bit different structure, if people come in person to view that, there'll be chairs set up kind of a little bit more fishbowl style, and there'll be no public opportunity to speak. It's a work session for the board, people are welcome to come and observe, or again, watch live-streamed or archived video. But we'll certainly be adding those artifacts, the report, the presentation, to Board Docs as well.
Great, thank you. So with that, that is scheduled for December 11th, 2023, our school board work session, facilities report presentation, 5:30. board work session, facilities report presentation, five thirty PM here at the Education Service Center, uh, followed by a regular board meeting on January eighth, also five thirty PM at the Education Service Center. Curriculum Committee will meet on December nineteenth and on January twenty, uh, January sixteenth, both at four thirty, both the Education Service Center and Policy Committee, January ninth, twenty twenty-four, four PM, Education Service Center, um, again, I will encourage members of the public to watch for the official postings, as the time and date of these meetings may change, but that is the calendar as it currently stands, are there any questions with regard to the calendar? All right, hearing none, uh, any items for follow-up and communication? All right, also hearing none, looks like we've reached the end of our planned agenda, so I would move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie, we have a motion and second to adjourn, any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll, Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Ms. Lang? Oh, can you say that again, Kelly, just almost, I think you didn't come through, Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Thank you, and Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Mr. Swigerd votes yes, Ms. Aragot?
Yes.
Mr. Revholz is absent, Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, we stand adjourned, thank you to everyone for attending in person and virtually, have a good evening.